The February 26, 2019 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. Would you please take the roll call?
Will there, Laura?
Here.
Crowsey?
Here.
Pack?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Palmary?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
President Seven?
Would you all please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would like a moment of silence before the pledge to honor a young man who lost his life Sunday in the mayhem on Highway 41, Andrew Schallfelker.
Thank you. We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do the things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
So, Henry, we have a certificate for you for Liediance and the Pledge if you want to kind of swing around and face that corner. I've got some questions to ask you. So, your name, where you go to school, and your favorite subject?
My name is Henry Brock. I go to Martin Luther School. My favorite subject is science.
Okay, great. Now, we have a certificate for you. Now, you can stay and watch the council meeting, or your dad said he'd like you to go home and help shovel. So, it's up to you and your dad how you do this. Okay? Thank you. Before we begin, I would like to compliment Chief Stanley and Chief Smith for the outstanding services their people provided during, as I said, the mayhem on Highway 41 on Sunday. All departments throughout the county came together, I think as far away as Ribbon and Berlin, so it really came together as one very coordinated unit. So, thank you, everyone involved. And it was a horrific accident on 41, and I think we're lucky that only one person did lose their life. So, Chief Stanley, I'm not sure if I see Chief Smith here. If you'd like to say a few words about your people, I think they did an outstanding job.
Thank you, Mayor, on behalf of the members of the Oshkosh Fire Department and Chief Smith and the members of the Oshkosh Police Department. We're glad that we work for a city that gives us the latitude and the ability and the resources to be able to reach out into the surrounding areas in the community, in our larger county, to be able to help when called upon. So, all reports were that the incident ran very smoothly, that fortunately no rescuers were injured during that event, which is always a concern. So, we're honored to be able to help out and appreciate you taking notice of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have two presentations this evening. The first is Tony Olson for Guns and Hoses.
Mr. Mayor, actually, I'll be... Tony called me a short while ago. He had something come up tonight, so he won't be able to make this. So, as the head official at the game this coming Saturday night, I'd like to tell every... Invite everyone out to the... Oh, I'm watching you! I'd like to invite everyone out to the Oshkosh Community YMCA on 20th Avenue this Saturday, March 2nd, at 3:00 PM for the Guns and Hoses Charity Hockey Game. This is some really, really good hockey, and it's a... And it is a charity game that they are raising money to support NAMI, the National Association of Mental Illnesses. There's many raffles that will be a part of this. They've got... There's herd tickets, Green Bay Gambler ticker tickets, Rock USA, Country USA tickets. And just recently, the... There was a new raffle donation from Max Air. They have donated a private flight for four down to Chicago. Pam, just settle down a second. With the... You will fly to Chicago and then attend the Blackhawk game against the Dallas Stars, and then be back home that evening. So, there's some... Like I say, there's some great raffle prizes. One of the things, if you have kids, that they would be really interested in participating in is that between the first and second period and the second and third period, one of the raffle prizes is a ride on the Zamboni. So, every hockey player's dream is to someday drive the Zamboni, so it's a pretty neat thing. It's this Saturday afternoon again at the Oshkosh Community YMCA at 3:00 PM. $5 to get in. Children under five are free, so come on out, support a great cause, watch some really good hockey, and just everybody be nice to the referees, though. So, we'll hopefully see many people out there.
Even the senior referees?
Yeah, yeah. But you know what? I gotta tell you, I've probably heard everything, so, you know, no, I can't... There's probably nothing I haven't heard. So, hope to see y'all there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Great event. Next, we have a presentation for the Marion Road redevelopment, a proposal. Mr. Davis, would you like to introduce the developers that have come all the way from Iowa?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Again.
To... Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To give the council a little background, the redevelopment authority owns three parcels in the redevelopment area. Last fall, Merge, the development group from Iowa, submitted an option to purchase one of the parcels there along the river and Jackson Street. They did some more research over the winter, and they came back to the RDA earlier this month to request options on the other two parcels in Marion Road. The RDA did grant those earlier this month, and with the expectation that they'll be coming forward with a development proposal, possibly a TIF and a development agreement. We asked them to make a presentation to council so you could see what the RDA has seen and give you an opportunity to ask any and all questions. And with that, I'll turn it over to Brent Dahlstrom and Joy Hanneman for Merge.
Thank you. Yeah, Brent Dahlstrom here. Council Mayor, thanks for having us tonight, and we will keep it to that 10 minutes and leave some time for questions at the end if there would be any. We're very thankful to be here, and back in late summer, we made our first visit here to Oshkosh, and really, the city staff has been incredible since the first meeting where we just really just drove around the town and really didn't have any idea of where the best spot would be to develop. This all came about because of the Opportunity Zone tax law that was put in effect, and the city staff applied, and we're granted a few census tracts here in Oshkosh, and so that's what brings us to this town, and we're really excited to be here. So, a little bit about us. I'm from Iowa. Joy's actually from Madison, and we've been... I've been developing for over 10 years, and my extreme... My deep passion is to develop in an urban core. Just... It's what I love to do. It's what our team has set out to do, and so a lot of the Opportunity Zones happen to be in that urban core. So, a little bit about our process, the first thing that we actually do is take a step back. So, we don't take a building that we've built before and just plop it on your... On your city and just say, hey, this is what you get, no matter what, this is what you're gonna get. So, our first step is to meet with as many people as possible. So, we spent two days in Oshkosh just meeting with stakeholders, people that really care and have a deep passion for Oshkosh. The one thing that we always find out is our initial assumption is always wrong. So, the way we laid out our buildings six, seven months ago, we've completely changed, and that's based on a lot of the conversations we had with those stakeholders, and some of them that have a deep interest in being involved in this project and being on that first floor. So, after we do that pullback, then we dig in a little deeper with some conceptual drawings and continue that discussion. Joy's gonna talk a little bit more about that engagement with the retailers.
Yeah, so a little bit more about what we actually uncovered in our meetings with folks here in Oshkosh. We also dug a lot into the Imagine Oshkosh document that showed us where the vision was for the Marion and Jackson District, and we tried to really bring a project with the help of Slingshot Architecture, who's a firm out of Des Moines that really specializes in urban infill, to identify what the drivers of the project were, and we hope that you would take some time to dig into this full package. I understand that there's a lot of words on here for right now, but actually, should this be up? There we go. Perfect. But a few things that we identified that we really, really wanted to use as drivers for this site were the opportunity to really activate the waterfront, to make it a space that was welcoming to the community, and so that our first floor was active, and it would connect the downtown area to the water and make it just more of a cohesive feeling because water is something that the city of Oshkosh takes a lot of pride in, and the connectivity between the water and the city is a real asset here. There was also identified in the Imagine Oshkosh plan was an unmet housing need. Also, we heard a lot in our community discussions with major employers that there was a challenge with recruiting employees and retaining employees. The university also mentioned that there was a real desire to create community connections that would encourage students to stay here post-graduation, making the urban environment just a little more pedestrian-friendly. They talked about how the Marion District almost had a suburban feel, and it's so close to downtown that it really needed more of a pedestrian-oriented buildings and just generally de-emphasized the car, which is something that we really, really believe in, in downtowns. And then finally, just to create a cohesive neighborhood, Alan mentioned that we added a couple more sites to our proposal as we did more and more research, and we're really excited about that factor, just to be part of a real neighborhood development that extends beyond the original thought of just activating that waterfront. So, what emerged was through all of these community meetings was that this project would really be positioned as a front door for Oshkosh, something that would be a community asset that everyone would be able to access and use and enjoy and be proud of. So...
So, some of these sites we'll go quickly through, but our team dove into the zoning and what, you know, we think about setbacks, parking, building height. Those are just something, so when you have more time, you can read through that, but it's something that you're already very familiar with. Something that we really think about is how will someone live here? And so, when you're taking a walk, how far and where do you get with a five-minute walk, which is really when you're maybe just walking your dog out and back, and then a 10-minute walk is more of a destination? So, maybe you're going to a G League game, or you're going out to eat or something. So, we take a look at our site that we chose and where you can get in that five minutes and where you can get in that 10 minutes, and this is considering walking. If you're biking, you can get much farther than that, but really, we want to consider if you're just... If you're just walking. So, moving on. The car is a central focus to a lot of developments. That's not necessarily what we're looking for and where we start. So, we start with the pedestrian mind, and then we move on to the bike, and then we... And then lastly, we still do think about the car, but we... This is really showing how all three modes of transportation are getting to and from the site, and I think it's very important to have access for all three. Great. When I talked about not designing all the buildings the exact same, we're gonna go briefly... I'll actually touch on it really quickly. So, get into this. We really got into the history of Oshkosh and the rock formations and what made this just a special place for the logging industry. So, that... Those rock formations, really, the architects really dug into that, and that's how we got the inspiration for the overall design of the project. So, that... Moving on. This is just talking about everything that's around the site. Let me have two... Okay, so then we get into the site plan in the ground floor. Yep, we're zooming in here. So, we've talked to multiple tenants. One thing that's very important to us is that we're not bringing competition to what that some already great assets are in town. So, we're looking at tenants that are looking for bigger spaces already in town, maybe newer spaces, and they haven't had the ability to have that, or just businesses or people that are entrepreneurs that are looking to start a business. And so, if everything would go great, it's been incredible, the amount of excitement there has been around the idea of this project, where the vast majority of these buildings are already loosely... People are interested in going in them if this project would be able to move forward. So, we're really excited about that. The last thing we want to do is bring in a bunch of businesses to compete with the people that are already here. We don't want to say specifics, but it's definitely a food desert downtown, so we're very hopeful to bring a solution to that issue, as well as some partnerships with the university and some other exciting things that we've been working on. Yeah, go ahead.
Before we get to the pretty pictures, I'll just add a little bit more to what Brent was saying. So, on this ground plane, something that I didn't, I guess, introduce in my introduction was my involvement in the investment in early-stage community in Madison. So, something that has been really integral to all of our developments in the urban core has been the concept of micro-retail, and you'll see, we do have quite a few bigger spaces on the first floor, but micro-retail is designed to be move and ready for folks that are just starting a business so that they don't have to incur a bunch of early tenant build-out costs. They can have a lower commitment and just get started and maybe grow into the something that's a little bit more suited for their needs once they get started. And then you'll also see, we heard a lot about diverse housing needs, so the... This row of townhomes here, we thought would be really key for executives that we were trying to recruit to Oshkosh. Maybe they'd want to try it out before they move their family here, that they could have a short-term living solution while they, you know, enjoy the community. And then the other factor was that all of the residential units are made to have a balcony that orients toward the water, so all of those folks will be able to enjoy the water there as well.
All right. I know we're just right at the 10-minute mark, so we are...
Take as much time as you need.
All right. And Alan was... He told me I couldn't do it, so I'm gonna listen to Mayor.
Alan doesn't make the rules.
Yeah, yeah. Great, great.
They trump my opinion.
So, we're moving into a bird's-eye view. This, like I said earlier, it's much different than the original concept, but we're really excited about it. One of the tenants really wanted to face the right side of the screen, and so we reoriented that. But the... I think what excites us the most is some of these developments, even in your town, it really blocked the feeling that maybe you weren't invited to go look at the water, right? That you could have a building that just blocks whether your walking path or your site, that you knew it was back there because you've been here, but someone like myself who hasn't, it's really at times hard to see, well, how do I get to the water, right? And so, ours... Our development really takes into account that this is a community asset, and we want everyone, including the tenants, to feel invited to walk through the courtyard to get and enjoy that, the water. So, we're working with the city and to get a kayak area to drop off and descend off. We have a restaurant that will have a patio out on the water, and then you still have all those units that also get to enjoy the view of the water. But we really want, when you drive in or you drive by, that you can feel you could take your family out there, or you could just enjoy it with your friend, or maybe even a tenant that you know that lives there. I'm sure there'll be questions about parking later on. We have an entire slide dedicated to that, so we'll address that later as questions come up. This is a view from the water. You know, it's... There's a lot of pride in the water here because it is so beautiful, and it's really exciting. So, my... The town I come from is almost the exact same size as Oshkosh, and one of the things that I noticed there and here is that you have this great water, but not a lot of people get to just be close up as a pedestrian and enjoy it. Sometimes you drive by and you maybe take it for granted, but you definitely don't always get a chance to live in it in a really nice place, and so we're really hoping this is one of the solutions where you can just take it all in and just enjoy it as a pedestrian or a biker, or also in the restaurant. We are... We're there. Just a couple more shots. I'm sure you have all this in your packet, but just gives you an idea of how... What the experience would be as you're just walking through and through the path. And then the final shot, which we can leave up as we ask for questions, but I want to just say thank you for the time. I know it's a little bit more than 10 minutes, but we really are thankful and respect your time, but if there's any questions, we'd love to answer them now. We also have our website if you want any more information about ourselves and the other projects that we're doing and have built. So, any questions?
Just one comment. I think this is my third time to see the presentation, which is great. I think the thing that really impressed me the first time is you talked... This is a lifestyle development. It's not just apartments or whatever mixed use. It is lifestyle, and I think that's... I think that's critical at this stage in Oshkosh's development in future, so...
Yeah.
It's a very exciting project.
Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Palmary?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions, just out of curiosity, if you go back to a view that shows Jackson Street there at the corner. That says Jackson Bridge. Isn't it Oregon Street Bridge?
I think it's named Oregon Street Bridge, and Jackson ends probably at the bridge abutment.
So, I guess the question is, if you go back to the site plan, did planning staff, did you have some discussions about what council was looking at a few years ago and may still yet have to contend with? There may be some rebuilding of that bridge?
Yeah, we talked with... In great detail about that, and we are orienting the buildings in a way that we could be prepared for either scenario. We do understand that there's a big decision to be made in the future and that it's not known what that's going to be, but we're definitely designing the buildings with that in mind, that there's a possible change coming in the future.
Sure, sure. And I guess the other question I have is, how many units total?
So, there's 217 residential units total.
And this was one that asked for like a variance on or exceeding the number of parking, right?
Yeah, so we have a graph of how per zoning, there's roughly 340 stalls required for the 217 units, and we get there through three different ways, and with parking stalls, joint parking, and then on-street parking. So, we exceed that number through that, but there is a variance per the code by a few stalls of actually having them on-site for a surface-level parking spot. One of the challenges in why we came back with three sites is what makes the project so successful is that you are exciting and what a community asset is that it is mixed use. But in order to do that, that means we can't put parking on the first floor, and because of the water table, we can't go underground like you would see in some other areas, and so that's what led us to more of a central parking strategy, and that's why we needed that. And if it... In the future, you needed more, it's perfect for a ramp still, and if cars change and we need less, it's still perfect for development in the future. So, we think it's a great middle ground to see what happens in the future with the use of cars.
Nice, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Olson Osby?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say, this is actually probably one of the nicest presentations I think we've seen in a while from a developer, and I'm sure my colleagues would agree. Probably one of the most genuine and sincere as well that we've seen. I appreciate you taking time to actually get to know our community and to also understand and to try to have something adapt versus taking something that, you know, is cookie-cutter and just plopping it in, and then what do we owe you? So, thank you for your approach.
Thank you.
So, my... The only question that I have is, you know, just from a standpoint of, you know, financing a project of this magnitude, can you share what you can without divulging confidential information of how you guys are financing this project?
Yeah, so it's... We actually have a slide that's... I was just at the governor's conference, Joy and I. We gave a presentation on that because one of the challenges with mid-sized communities is how do you bridge that gap in total value of whether... And why did Madison get all the development, and why didn't Oshkosh, or, you know, in Iowa? Why did Des Moines get all the development? Why didn't Waterloo, where I'm from, get the development? And so, we actually put this slide together, and when I put it up, it was almost like the paparazzi were out and everyone was taking pictures that were city managers, because it really starts to make sense on why we will be asking and requesting for TIF assistance, and that is something that's, you know, very common in the state of Wisconsin, even in Madison, correct? And so, we put this slide together to show just a 600-square-foot apartment and what that value is in a town of your size and a town of Madison. It's not just the fact that the rent is different in Madison. It really gets down to who... What the value is at the end. And so, an investor from California, or even China, or somewhere else starts to look at a town, they just... They've heard of Madison, even that's kind of a little small, but they've certainly never heard of a town where I'm from or where you're from, and so you start to have a different cap rate. And so, we'll share this, we'll send this over, but we will be asking for... And still, Madison gives TIF, right? That's how it got built, and Des Moines is what I'm extremely familiar with, and people think it just happened overnight. No, it was TIF and city incentives, so there will be that. The Opportunity Zone program makes this possible just for us to be here, right? So, we have a family with... That's deeply committed to this project, and we've already dug on other Opportunity Zone projects, but their capital also makes it possible. So, it's not just the TIF incentive that makes it possible, but it's also the Opportunity Zone. The Opportunity Zone doesn't make a bad project good. It makes a good project better, if that makes sense. It's not a dollar-for-dollar. It's more of a tax deferral.
So, I mean, is the investment of capital that's outside of the Opportunity Zone as well as if, you know, in the future, you're gonna be asking for a TIF in a developer's agreement? You know, is the capital already raised for the project?
Correct. 100% raised for the project. We'd be happy to share that letter from that for the capital source, as well as we already have the bank letter for the full support for this particular project from one of the largest banks in the country.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds great. I appreciate it.
We will be going for grants, too. Cleanup grants, CDI. It kind of is all hands on deck to make something great like this happen, and you... Thank you for your nice comments. So, we go with the approach of let's design the best thing we possibly can. What's perfect for the next 60 years? And if we start there, we found out it's a lot easier later to find out where we can meet in the middle and be a partner, rather than say, how much money are you gonna give us, and then we'll design it, which is what I did 10 years ago, and it... Nobody really enjoyed it in the end. No one really felt like they got the best deal. You know, I'm a little less sad because I don't have a good building. You know, I'm a little less sad because I don't have a good building, and you're a little less sad because now, now you have that building. So I only say that because experience helps.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you. To just kind of reiterate what Councilmember Allison Osby said, I mean, the thought behind this, this is, this is, this is well thought out, there's many plans that have come before this council that I've been on, that are nowhere near this developed, thought-out, planned-out. The fact that you've got your, the fact that you've got your financing, you know, you, the capital part of it yet, yes, we still need to work out the TIP. Your, your, you know, I can tell the commitment of, just by this short meeting, the commitment that's there, so I, I, this is, this is tremendous. And like you say, this is just something that I have not seen in my eight years on council, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mugirauer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't piggyback too much off of what Councilmember Osby and Allison Osby and Mr. Peck said, but it's very similar. It's a good presentation. I thoroughly enjoy that it's a really, it's truly a mixed use. Five, five stores, five stories. And some of the comments that I had listened to on the Plan Commission meetings, when, when your representatives had a chance to interact with the folks and talk about the potential uses for that first floor, the commercial area, and some of those startups like you mentioned, and just some of the other interesting, or potentially interesting entities that could go in those, those spaces. It's something very unique, especially on the riverfront, and would be excited to see something just like that, right in that spot. So I'm, I'm thankful for what you brought, and it looks really good so far.
Great, thank you.
I see no other councilmembers wishing to ask any questions or discuss it further, so Brendan, Joy, thank you, good to see you again.
Thank you so much.
And we promise better weather, better, better weather the next time you're here.
Yeah, we'll be here in the spring.
Great presentation.
It's going to be incredible weather then. We'll talk to you soon. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing, which is a continuation of one we had two weeks ago, and we somewhat abbreviated because of the weather, when it was snowing out, it's still So really convening, reconvening, or convening this public hearing, I've read it three times, no reason to go through that a fourth time, I guess. So Pam, has anyone signed up to speak to this?
No one has signed up.
All right. So at this point, I would ask the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? From the public? Bring it back to the council for discussion and a vote.
Mugirauer.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
Next is the first opportunity for citizens to address the council. Pam, has anyone signed up?
No one has signed up.
All right. Move on to the consent agenda. These are items of routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an admirer be moved from the consent agenda for discussion. Pam, has anyone registered to address any items on the agenda or the consent agenda?
No one is registered.
All right, thank you. Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding Resolution 19-111, Darren, if I could just ask a question on that. So this is conditional use for group development out at Oak Ridge Drive and Ruffel Roadway. Just a question about the group development, could you just like define that for folks at home? I think I read this would be allowing three, no more than three?
Sure, we, yes, it's, when we say group development, it's more than, it's generally, it's generally more than two groupings of buildings that are coming, coming together on a site, so it's required to get a conditional use permit. In this one, I think there are six buildings that are part of it, six, you know, about six buildings, six condo buildings that will be developed as part of this. So as, from our zoning code perspective, you have to come through the, through a conditional use permit, because we classify that as a group development. We do the same with multiple, with commercial structures, so if you have a bunch of strip mall, or you're in commercial buildings on the site, we also consider that to be a group development. It's just a catch-all, so to see if we have any concerns with traffic generation, things like that.
Thank you.
I see no other councilmember wishing to ask any questions or address any of these resolutions, so would you please take the roll.
Mugirauer.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
No items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to enlaid over ordinance, which is ordinance 19-124, create section 18-1.2 short-term rentals. Pam?
Yes, we have one individual, Rick Larson, 170 River View Court, Appleton.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Rick Larson, I'm Vice President of Communities and Member Programs for EAA, so I represent EAA tonight. Last week, you all received a letter from EA, signed by Sean Elliott and myself, requesting a slight change to the short-term rental ordinance that is being proposed. As we all know, AirVenture is unique, it's unique in a lot of different ways, and to have a world-class event of this magnitude in the city, the size of Oshkosh, is indeed unique. For five straight years, we've seen the event grow, and to accommodate in attendance of more than 600,000 means that required lodging must go well beyond the thousand or so hotel rooms that are available within the city. Following meetings with Mark Roloff and his team, it was suggested that we reach out directly to the city council about a concern and also a recommended mitigation. EA fully understands the reasoning behind the ordinance, but we also understand that the intended impact is not the once-a-year renter who only rents during AirVenture itself. We are requesting that the council consider a change to the trigger period of the ordinance. We'd like that changed from more than 10 nights to more than 16 nights. The change would minimize potential unintended consequences caused by additional requirements imposed by the city. We host more than 800 exhibitors during AirVenture, that makes it the largest aviation expo in the United States. These exhibitors come early to set up and remain after the event to tear down. The availability of private housing is a critical element. We're concerned that if there is any change to a resident's desire to offer housing during that 10-to-16-day period, it will simply drive business partners out of Oshkosh. That creates a less hospitable experience, and it reduces the economic impact to Oshkosh itself. And just a reminder, that the last economic impact study that was completed by UWO showed over $170 million in economic impact to the area each year. The local community that opens its doors to AirVenture attendees has become part of the lore and culture of the event itself. Modifying a city ordinance in a way that places additional compliance burdens, or even creates the appearance of such, is not good for AirVenture or the city of Oshkosh. We also believe that the change to more than 16 nights will better ensure the proper optics and communication of who this ordinance applies to. As we, as we prepare for the 50th consecutive event in Oshkosh, we want to thank you for considering our request and appreciate the positive working relationship that exists between EAA and the city of Oshkosh. Without that relationship, we simply would not be host to the world's premier aviation event.
Pam, did anyone register? Did you say just one person?
Just that one individual, yes.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. We, those of us that were at Monday's council meeting with the legislators, I think, got a little update from council, our representative hints that the state legislature even struggled with this ordinance, to how many days it should be. Originally, they talked seven, and then there was, I think, six or seven, or eight, and then they got to 10, with somewhat of a compromise. I do think that we need this ordinance, because I think there are a lot of people that, not only during EA, but other times of the year, rent their homes out. Maybe they're registered with VBROs, maybe they're registered to be Air B2B, we don't know, we don't know how many. But I do think that we really need to look at the impact that EA does have on our community, and how it impacts the economic development side. So I'd like to make an amendment to the ordinance. I move to amend the ordinance to change the licensing requirement for persons operating a short-term rental for more than 10 nights to more than 16 nights each year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second as our discussion. Councilmember Mugirauer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern with it not lining up with the state statute is it just creates more confusion. Right now, whether we pass this or not, really, but right now, at 10 nights, they're required by law to get a county tourist rooming house license, which requires a health inspection. So whether or not we have ours at 10 or 16, doesn't matter. At 10 days, a trigger is that they have to have a county health inspection done at a cost of $130 annually, by the way, to be able to have that tourist rooming house license. Doesn't matter what our number is, it really doesn't. Because at 10 days, the state says the county's got to issue that. So whether we do this number or that number, it really doesn't matter, because at 10 days, that kicks in. So that, if we have another number, I think it's just going to create more confusion as to, when do they got to file, what piece of paperwork, and who do they got to file it with? And I think for continuity's sake, it should stay 10. We should lobby Madison hard. I hope EAA does, does as well, because I think as we, we talked on Monday morning, this was an unintended consequence of, of their actions, that it's having an impact on, on this large event that I love having here, and I want it to stay here, and I want as many people that can stay in the city of Oshkosh to do so, but without as much confusion as this is going to potentially create. Thanks.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. So I support both what Mr. Herman is doing, I also support what Mr. Mugirauer is saying as well, because we were talking about that on Monday morning. So I guess my question to staff would be then, you know, is there benefit to going from 10 to 16 days?
I can, off the top of my head, we'll have fewer administrative, administrative time spent on it, because I think there'll be fewer permits issued. So staff won't have to make sure they've gotten all the inspections done, and gotten all their tax certifications from the Department of Revenue or anything like that. That won't kick in until the 16th day, and I'm guessing that's going to be fewer than had there, had it been set at 10. When it comes to, there might be less room tax, off the top of my head, because people won't be aware that they have to get a permit, and they'll have to pay room tax as well as a sales tax, so we'll probably miss some of that as well.
So I think, you know, I think there's, it's definitely a catch, it's a catch-22. So, because obviously, we're trying to appease with the state, you know, and then we're also, because also, you know, I've heard from the CBB as well, you know, and, and other hotels that are saying that, you know, if they're collecting and they're responsible, then so should those that, that rent out. So, you know, I guess my question would be, going back to EAA then, is, you know, obviously, we're not in the business of marketing the 10 or 16 days or what needs to be done, so is EAA willing to take the responsibility to try to get that information out, you know, working cooperatively perhaps with the CBB? You know, because it really, if, if we want to try to be, I guess, business-friendly, because the last thing I, that I want to do is not be able to have the housing here, because wherever they wake up and wherever they go to bed, that's where they're spending their money, as far as eating, going out, shopping, things of that nature. So again, unintended consequences perhaps with this whole situation, but I also don't want the response for it to come back and then be the responsibility of city staff to then have to try to explain this then to vendors and to guests and all that, because our business is not marketing. So, I guess, you know, and how do we have a discussion in this type of setting about that? You know, because obviously, you know, Ms. Albright isn't here to even save, you know, from the CBB standpoint, you know, are they willing to work cooperatively? And I don't know, you know, maybe perhaps the rest of my colleagues here might, you know, have some further input.
I think Mr. Larson and I can both kind of answer it together, so Rick, if you want to come back. I'll preface it by saying, based on our discussions, because education, marketing, however you want to call it, is necessary, we did add section two in the, in the ordinance that says, it'll be full force in effect beginning August 15, 2019. That was done intentionally, the whole idea is to get the word out between now and this AirVenture, so that as people depart Oshkosh, they know that there may be a couple little changes that may be going on. So that's, that, pretty much, we come to a meeting of the minds on that issue.
Yeah, and, and we appreciate the, the time we've spent discussing it. I think that, we certainly are prepared to do what we can do on our end, to try to educate and communicate this. We do understand that there's that inconsistency. I think we also, you know, certainly intend on, you know, trying to lobby the state in terms of what can be done to, you know, change the 10-day requirement itself, but, you know, to answer your question, I think we're, you know, we certainly stand ready to do what we can be doing to educate, you know, the folks that would be most impacted. And in this case, it's not the general attendee, it's those, you know, exhibitors that send teams of people here that find, you know, the private housing, you know, the best way to go for them, and, you know, I think that's something that we're going to have to work together on, but we're certainly willing to step up and do what we need to do.
Because one of the things that I recognize too is that, I mean, I know from experience in the past with one of the businesses that I owned, you know, approximately a decade ago, was that, you know, a number of those that come in, sometimes when they are vendors and things like that, they're actually coming in for business purposes as well.
Yes.
You know, they're from other countries, that, you know, definitely other regions, west coast, east coast, and the south. So it isn't just a matter of just attending EAA, sometimes when they're here, they're also trying to expand their business or, you know, whatever the case may be. So, so I understand it, it, I think it's just, it's tough, because as Mr. Mugirauer said, you know, when things get confusing, you know, then it just sometimes creates additional work for, you know, staff, so.
I just have one, I guess, one question is, a lot of people stay in the surrounding townships, Elgoma, Black Wolf, town of Oshkosh, not knowing what they might be doing. Well, this create confusion to people that, to them, it's, they're coming to Oshkosh, they're not coming to the town of Elgoma or town of Black Wolf. Is there any potential confusion down the road? We're doing one thing in the city, the townships are doing something a little bit different, but to the visitor, they're coming to Oshkosh.
That's an ongoing concern, I think that is where Councilmember Mugirauer came in with his observation. There's going to be confusion, quite honestly, regardless of which one you pick. We think there'll be less confusion with 10 and 10, and, but we, we're friends enough that we've, we have so much familiarity, you know, we just agree to disagree on that issue, but I think council members have, have stated both cases very well, and we certainly will follow whatever policy decision council makes on this issue.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Davis, could you just clarify then? So if we were to go, let's say we went with the longer period, the 16 days, that doesn't necessarily have to be contiguous, right? That's like cumulative over the year, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So in some ways, you know, I'm, I'm really conflicted on this, because again, it is, you know, this administrative nightmare and educational, you know, learning curve, but on the other hand, I could see where that might also benefit those people who want to host several shorter events, right? It would also give them that opportunity beyond just the 850 vendors. So I, yes, that's what I just wanted to clarify, was that the six, if, if we went with a longer period, it didn't have to be contiguous, it could be three, five days.
I can see value on both the 10 and the 16, and I can see why yes and no on both. But I mean, I think we're, like I've said before, we're very lucky to have EAA here. They've put us on the map. I can see the value in the 16 days to make it easier for the renters coming into the city. And they've done their research. I mean, they're not renting out in the poorer neighborhoods of the city. They're renting out the larger homes, and they know what to expect, and they get it. And a lot of them have rented from the same people for years. So I think there's not a real needed layer of protection on that side. So I'll be supporting the 16 days. Thank you.
Just one quick comment. Oshkosh is unique. EAA is very unique to the city, the state, even the country. This is another case of Madison, one-size-fits-all, not understanding there's a lot of different things happening throughout the state. And trying to force a community to, you know, fit an edict out of Madison is just causing the community's a lot of headache, again. So that is my word to the folks in Madison. Think about uniqueness that exists in the state of Wisconsin. Occasionally, watch PBS, they might get a hint that there's a unique state here. So that's my two cents worth, gentlemen. Deputy Mayor, Pal Mary.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up then. And the maximum on this would be 29 days to go, that would be beyond the short-term definition, correct?
Now you're taxing my memory. I think the cap might be 180. You might have to remind me of that one, Mr. Lyons.
29 consecutive days.
Not a short-term rental. More than 180 days in a calendar year would not be a short-term rental.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I see no other councilman wishing to speak. We do have an amendment in front of us to go from 10 to 16 days. Would you please take the roll?
Muggerauer?
No.
Crozey?
Yes.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pal Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 6-1.
Back to ordinance 19-124, section 8, 1-2, short terminals as amended. I will need a motion and a second. We have that, don't we?
Yeah.
We just take the roll.
Muggerauer?
No.
Crozey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Pal Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 6-1.
We have pending ordinances. The first is ordinance 19-125, approve amendments to chapter 5, article 3, section 5-18, special events, marches, and public assemblies. Pam.
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor, Pal Mary.
Thank you, Mayor. Is Mr. Mauer here? No.
Ms. Snell's here.
Oh, hi, Kathy.
It looks like this was in response to council's request regarding revision or review of the special events policy, that staff made a determination to remove council's ability to waive special events, applications for waiver of special events fees, correct?
We were asked by the council to just review the special events ordinance. In our review, the discussion we had was, in regard to the memo that was sent, that passed action, was that we have not taken action on that. So is it something that we want to continue having within that ordinance?
Thanks, I just wanted to clarify that. So I don't think I'll be able to support this because I don't want to tie up future councils or other future events that may want to bring an application to council for that, application for waiving those special events. You know, we don't know what might come before us, but I do appreciate staff reviewing the policy, and I'm also hopeful that the special events ordinance and policy, not talking about the fees, will have a little more thorough review in the near future. So at this time, yeah, I won't be able to support that.
Councilmember Muggerauer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got to echo Councilwoman Pal Mary's comments on this. It takes away an ability of ours, it's our ability to waive those fees, and it just takes it away, and that's not something I'm interested in doing. I know we haven't, councils haven't previously approved, I don't think, any actual flat-out waivers. But it should be our, under our purview to do so, and it should stay there, and that's the reason I won't be supporting it either.
Councilmember Crozey.
I'll repeat what they just said. I think it should go by a case-by-case basis. If there's ever a situation where we do want to waive the fees, that's in our right, and I would lose that ability as a council and for future councils. So I won't be supporting this either.
With respect to that, with respect to that issue, that is not the only change in this ordinance. There are other changes regarding definitions of marches, and city attorney can get into those. If there is a majority of council that wants to retain that, it was really based on the fact that the staff would be making an observation and a report that these groups met the criteria, and then the council was voting it down, was putting the council in the position of being the bad guy, so to speak. And we were trying to avoid that for you. If that's the only issue, my suggestion would be to amend the ordinance to just retain the authority of council to issue those waivers, and we can make that ordinance changed. But there are a few more changes that were in there, and I guess between city attorney and Ms. Snell, maybe they can get it.
It's been a while since we worked on it, so it's going to, I know it was adding Kathy's position in in a number of places.
And then we did add a definition for block parties. We have a lot of block party applications that have come through and continue to grow every year, and we had no definition of a block party within the ordinance.
And just to make sure that they're real, like genuine neighborhood block parties, not a business throwing a commercial kind of block party thing.
Deputy Mayor, Pal Mary.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I don't really have any other issues within that piece other than, because we had hoped to see a more thorough review of the special events policy, I just wouldn't want that to be box-checked, that that was the end of the discussion on the special events policy. So I guess I could make a motion to just add council back in as being able to take on those applications and review those requests for waivers of fees.
Do we have a second to that amendment?
Second.
Any discussion? Would you please take the roll?
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crozey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pal Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 7.
Hold on. Ordinance 19-125, as amended, which is approve amendments to chapter 5, article 3, section 5-18, special events, marches, and public assemblies.
Mayor.
Mr. Herman.
Thank you. I guess I'd like to ask Deputy Mayor Pal Mary what she means by a further evaluation of the policy. They've made some changes to it. What more changes would you like to see?
Deputy Mayor, Pal Mary.
I believe this council has had a number of conversations regarding special events policy in the past, separate and distinct from special events fees, about reviewing the policy and ordinance as it related to vetting or prioritizing or reviewing the policy of what special events we approve or that we recognize.
Well, the definition of a special event in the ordinance, you want it further defined or you want it?
Not necessarily the definition, but how we determine which, because of the nature of the growth of the number of events and some of the other conversations that councils had and direction we gave to city manager, this is going on a couple of years ago, and in numerous conversations since then, that we would be reviewing this further as it related to, again, vetting the types of special events.
Well, under section 6, there is an application review. There's three sections of it, four, and then it goes into even further detail of kind of defining a, you know, that the special event, maybe there are dates, it's reviewed by city staff. I guess I'm just wondering why we need to take more staff time to review when they've already, the city attorney and special event coordinator, and I'm sure some other staff have already reviewed the ordinance and made the changes they thought necessary.
I believe one of the distinctions that a couple of us were referring to was family friendly events, those that have alcohol, those that don't, the number of events, what those events contribute back to the community. There was a little bit more discussion that was hoped for after the events piece of it was dealt with.
Okay.
Councilmember Peck. I'm sorry, Mr. Herman.
I guess I just finish with saying, I think that that's all kind of in there, and ultimately, if we think, which we just added back in, that we can deny a permit or we can, you know, tweak the fees if we think there's too many of one type of activity versus another type of activity, council has the right to not issue a permit. So, but if other council members feel that we want staff to dig further into this, maybe we need to actually workshop then. I guess it's go bit by bit with the ordinance.
Point of order.
Councilmember Peck.
Point of order. I believe that this line of questioning is not germane to the discussion of the motion on the floor and all.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think, and I'm not 100% sure because I don't want to speak for Ms. Pal Mary, but I think perhaps what you may have been alluding to was, which is kind of what's defined in here, is, you know, we've obviously had discussions during budget time, especially when it comes to the overtime, the amount of overtime for police and fire, which many times often is, then goes back to special events. And we have talked about, you know, those that are, say, sports-related versus festival, drinking-related. We have talked about some of those things. We've also talked about too, you know, we, this happens every year, we get to the summer, and, you know, where staff is exhausted, we're stretched then at all levels. You know, and we talked about, I think, over the course of the years of, you know, a calendar that actually council sees that identifies, okay, so on this weekend, you know, do we have three events or do we have eight events? And I think maybe perhaps, and again, I don't want to speak for Ms. Pal Mary, but I think that's kind of what she's referencing, not so much of getting into staff's day-to-day, but some of the, again, unintended consequences of being the event city and how it relates to this ordinance.
Deputy Mayor, Pal Mary.
Exactly. Thanks for sharing that additional detail that has skewed me. It was one of the calendaring discussions.
All right, let's move on. Would you please take the roll?
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crozey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pal Mary? Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 6-1.
Ordinance 19-126, amend chapter 4, alcohol beverages, ordinance pertaining to general requirements for licensing and use of license. Pam, anyone sign up to address this?
No one has signed up.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crozey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pal Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 7.
Next is ordinance 19-127, approve a zone change from heavy industrial in Perrin's HI to heavy industrial with a planned development overlay in Perrin's HI-PD, close Perrin's, north of the railroad tracks, east-west of Clearville Road and State Highway 91 intersection, a portion of the southwest industrial park planned commission recommends approval. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crozey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pal Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 7.
Next is resolution 19-128, approve request to attach to the city from Town of Nakaimai, Swaderski voluntary attachment. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Discussion.
Well, there's a second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crozey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pal Mary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried 7.
We now have two new ordinances. There'll be no formal action taken on either one this evening. The first is ordinance 19-129, approve closure of Oregon Street from West 16th Avenue to West 21st Avenue, including the intersection of West 20th Avenue, Oregon Street. Pam, anyone register?
No one is registered.
Next is ordinance 19-130, amend flood plain overlay zoning ordinance to adopt flood insurance study dated December 2017 for Sawyer Creek hydrology and hydraulics analysis, stop letter of map revisions dated 3/27/2019 for portions of Sawyer Creek, adopt revised FEMA firm map numbers 55139C0215E, 55139C0330E, and 55139C0310E, create flood storage at district, planned commission recommends approval. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this?
Yes, Bernie Pitts, 617 West Irving.
Name is Bernie Pitts, 617 West Irving. I have some questions about this. The city is adding more water flow into Sawyer Creek. Sawyer Creek, on part of it, lays on private property, which I happen to own part of, and that land is being taxed. When you are adding a flood plain and in extending the flood area, you're putting that on private property. And I'm wondering, are you planning on making compensation to these people that you're doing that, taking their property without due process of the law? There is a federal law that says they have the right to ward this water off, and you're now passing a city ordinance saying that you're going to use part of their property because you've added water into Sawyer Creek. I have a very big question of how you can do that.
What we're proposing right now is not adjusting the water that's being added, right? James, the water is what's being added right now. The firm maps are, the flood insurance rate maps are determined, are an engineering calculation that's determined by elevations that are in the field. So what we've done here is, over the years, we've been able to do a number of improvements to the Sawyer Creek watershed that with the new bridges, what else we have out there? The James Road Detention Basin.
The bridges and a number of projects to retain water as well.
So what's happened is that's affected the flood insurance rate map, so it's affected the flood elevation. So whether you're, what we're doing right now is more accurately effect, or more accurately designating what the flood elevation is. The flood elevation was there before, but what we're doing right now is just reflecting the situation that's on the ground. What we're proposing to do is adopt the FEMA maps. FEMA's put this out here. These are the maps that are actually right now being proposed by FEMA. FEMA, there's a couple of things going on. The The firm, it's the flood insurance rate maps. That's what's put out by FEMA. That's what determines how you get your flood insurance. In order for us to participate in the flood insurance program, we have to go by and adopt the, adopt the firm maps as a regulatory tool. The firm map in and of itself is not a regulatory tool. The maps that we're approving as part of this process, we adopt them as part of our zoning, our zoning ordinance itself. So it becomes a regulatory tool, so, and we're also required to do that by the state. What am I missing?
There's, there's an existing map out there that we're trying to update.
We're not changing any water flow in the watershed. We're not adding any water flow to the watershed. We're not taking any water flow out of the watershed. It is updating the study to use more commonly accepted study practices now versus previous versions of the, the study. It is an update to a previous study. There has been a, you know, a flood insurance study done on this watershed. I believe the last one was early two thousand.
Two thousand and three?
Yeah, two thousand and three. Thank you, Darren. So, you know, we are not adding any water, taking any water out. We're just updating the study. The results of that updated study have been presented to both the state and the federal government, and they have in turn come back with the maps, as Darren has suggested. These are the maps that correlate to that analysis.
The water is already getting there. That water, I mean, we're doing as much with all, or what we've done is to do some delay of that water getting there with detention basins and things like that. But the water's not changing. The water's still getting down here. Basically, what we're doing is we're reflecting what FEMA, the flood insurance study that we, or the flood study that we've done, and that's what these maps are doing. It puts a regulatory basis on top of the FEMA maps.
One of the things I would point out on the third page of Mr. Birch's memo, which is, for those of you who have, page three seventy-eight in your, in your agenda packet, it's the first full paragraph of that, that area. And the purpose of this is to create flood storage district. That's one of the intents. And to address Mr. Pitts's concern, the impact of the flood storage district is that development cannot be done that will cause an increase in the regional flood elevation, elevation by removing flood storage volume. So the purpose of it is to address the concern that you have. But we have to do this to be in compliance with FEMA regulation. So that's the intent, and that's, what we're trying to do is make sure we address those issues. So the improvements that Mr. Robbie did when he was a stormwater engineer and continues as public works director is to lessen the impact. So hopefully, we're addressing the, the very concerns that you have, Mr. Pitts. And hopefully, we can answer any more questions that you might have.
The vast majority of property owners are benefiting by, through the actions that we've done. So the vast majority of properties have lost floodplain as part of this process, or flood, yeah, floodplain and/or floodway as part of this process. In order for us to make sure that that goes through and follows up and it actually occurs, because right now, we, right now, there's still processes left for this to occur. The county still has to approve, approve the flood, the flood storage districts. If the county doesn't approve the flood storage districts, we don't think that then these new FEMA maps will become effective because the FEMA maps are predicated on the flood storage districts being, being mapped by both the city and the county. That flood storage district is simply an overlay, like the, like the floodplain overlay, that it doesn't affect the base, the base land use underneath it, the zoning underneath it. It stays the same. What it says is, we want to protect the volume of water that's on that site going forward. Meaning, if you bring in a, say, for simplistic purposes, if you bring in a pail of dirt somewhere onto that property, you have to pull a pail of dirt somewhere else on that property because we want to maintain that volume of water that's there. Those areas right now are already wet during a regional flood, a regional storm event. In the city, they're mostly in detention basins. Out in the town areas, there, there are agricultural areas that are inundated during regional storm events.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
No, it doesn't. Because what you're doing is you're impacting the people downstream to get flood insurance for the people upstream. And that, by law, is considered trespassing. Now, your city attorney can look that up if you don't believe me. And that's, that's considered a trespass on their property by running the water across their property. Now, you, they were brought up, well, just a minute ago, that they dredged Sawyer Creek. Yes, they did. They dredged on my property without any permission. And they also did their test sporing on my property. And when I, the first hearing that they had on it, I went to at, out to the high school, and I said, who gave you permission to do test sporing? Well, they didn't need permission. Well, I went to the DNR, and they said, that's illegal. They can't do that. They can't touch the bottom of that. They travel across the water, but they can't touch the bottom. Then they went ahead and dredged it. So they've already trespassed on my property, and no compensation has been made. That is a taking without the proper law to do it.
Councilmember Peck.
FEMA. Now, we're, we're using maps drawn by FEMA, correct?
Based on the study that we provided them via the strand report. That's part of the process. Correct, correct, correct.
FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Association, Agency, correct?
Correct.
Federal. So what we're doing is, is that we are following directive from the federal Emergency Management Agency, correct?
Correct.
The gentleman's point says that there's a federal law related to takings. So if we're following federal law, how can we be breaking federal law? Am I wrong in my analysis?
Staff believes we're following federal law.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to ask you to explain this whole thing, but you just did. So, sit down. It is, it is rather complicated. So if there's anything else you want to add to kind of clarify to people that may be watching at home or listening. The mic is all yours.
The one, the one thing that I would add is that if you go to our website on the planning page, we have a whole page dedicated to the process. We have the, we have the, we have the strand report on there. We have the proposed maps. And we have this real cool interactive map that we've created that you could slide and see it before and after of what the floodplain situation is. That's on the, that's on the planning page at our website.
And for the vast majority of people, it will improve their situation. So potentially, they wouldn't need flood insurance. So most of them, I would characterize as winners, but that can only happen if we adopt the new maps. Otherwise, we revert back to the old maps, and they still have to continue paying the insurance, which the engineers say they're out of the floodplain they wouldn't need to do.
Councilmember Herman.
Mr. Robbie. I contacted, you referenced a neighbor to contact me. We had some public meetings, correct? All the, all the property owners that were affected by this got notification. And I think even Mr. Pitts mentioned a meeting at one of the high schools. So the affected properties all were notified that this mapping was being done, and we were redoing it so that those that were impacted had the information, correct?
Yes, there was a public meeting held in cooperation between the city and the county out at the Cofflin Center.
Okay.
And we mailed about four hundred and fifty notices.
About that, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to point the fact out that there was public information meetings, and all the affected properties were notified, and, and they were shown the maps and answered their questions, so.
The first that I see of this was in the Oshkosh Daily Northwestern. I went to the zoning and planning office, which it said was handling this. They didn't know nothing about it. They said that there was being taken care of upstairs in the engineering office. I went to the engineering office, and there was nobody there, knew nothing about it. So then I went back to the zoning and planning office, three trips, and they said, well, the people upstairs are taking care of it. So I made four trips to City Hall to begin with, to find out what was going on before I received anything in the mail. I went to the first hearing that you had, the zoning and planning office had. And I then had received a letter with a map on the back, which is very poorly drawn. I don't know if you've got a copy of it. And I asked questions. Well, your land probably isn't going to be affected. My land's already been affected. The city already has dredged on my property. The city already took, had a taking without just, just compensation. And it's, it's, where does it stop? So I looked it up myself, and you got the right to ward that water off.
Please, Mr. Pitts.
What?
I have no idea where your land is. Your, your, your land, your land, I have no idea where the land is.
It's on Sawyer Creek.
I don't think, I don't think anyone on the council does. So I think, I'd like to move forward. You're repeating yourself and making accusations. People were notified there were meetings, so let's move.
I went to the meetings too, sir. I did not go to the one out to the county because that was a night it stormed so bad?
Thank you. We have a new resolution, which is nineteen dash one-three-one. Approve general development plan for industrial uses in the southwest industrial park. I'm sorry, we don't vote.
No.
For once I get it right. Don't confuse them. All right. Resolution nineteen dash one-thirty-one. Approve general development plan for industrial uses in the southwest industrial park. Plan commission recommends approval. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Onto council discussion. Redirection to city manager and future agenda items. The first is a workshop with a joint meeting with the Oshkosh Area School Board March twentieth at five PM at their offices on two fifteen South Eagle. Can anyone, everyone make that? It'll be a one-hour session, correct?
Correct. The only two topics, we, we had the agenda because the meeting was canceled due to weather. The only two topics that are on the list at this point are mental health and child poverty. If there's any other items, we do have another meeting between now and then. So if you have any other topics that you'd like to discuss, certainly pass them along, and we'll work through with the school district to get those added.
I think one comment, we've discussed this too, that if you get beyond the two and you get into three and four discussions, that's about fifteen minutes each. And some of these are rather significant discussions. And I'd hate to cut something short just because we have one hour. So let's be very prudent in what we do put on that agenda.
I'm, I'm also noticing that suggested adjournment is at five fifty, kind of like our workshop. So it's, it's only fifty minutes.
That goes fast. We've found a. Councilmember Mugrower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know the last time we talked about this city manager role, you had mentioned that the school board wasn't prepared yet to discuss anything related to transportation. We do have a resolution laid over, and it should come back. And so that, we should push them to have a, have a discussion, even if it's brief, so that that can get brought up and discussed appropriately. It is laid over until after we meet with them. That was the, the guidance on it.
Yeah, my understanding is that the school board would like to carry that over into the spring. They don't feel they're prepared to talk about it. So that's, that's basically what I heard from the school board.
At what point are we going to start talking about this? Instead of just flapping our gums?
I can certainly pass on to the school board that you'd like to discuss it.
It's Councilperson Allison Osby's turn.
Thank, thank you. I think something that we have to remember here, too, is that it was not the school board, it was not the school district that came to the council asking for this to be done. It was a third-party group that brought this to council. So they brought it forward. It was, it was posed to us. It was not the school district nor the school board. So I think we need to give them the space and the latitude, I think, to determine when they're best ready to approach us on what they feel is a need. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out there because I think, and not that, I, I don't think it's intended, but I think because there's been a significant amount of time to pass of how this actually originated. So, you know, they know their kids, they know their kids' needs. And I think one of the, and that is a question because I actually have a coffee meeting tomorrow with a school board member. But in talking to some throughout the district, you know, I don't think they've had time to actually speak to their principals, their teachers, you know, to, to find out from them what they're seeing with the kids in their classroom. And I think we need to give them the ability to do that, just to be fair.
Deputy Mayor Paul Mary.
Thank you, Mayor. So actually, you're right in part, Ms. Osby. Part of the follow-up, though, was actually school board members and staff that met on a task force on that. And in our joint session prior to the new superintendent coming in, there was a transition interim proposal by the former superintendent. But I would agree with fellow council members that we do need to give that time to the new staff there in order to have a real meaningful discussion.
Councilmember Crowsey.
I'm going to agree with Councilmember Peck with the frustration. I mean, this has been on the table for at least two years. I mean, it doesn't take weeks to figure out a plan. I mean, we're trying to throw them a ball here. And that's one of the reasons why we delayed Mr. Peck's proposal is because we thought it would be coming in the next week or two where we'd have a discussion and come up with something together that we'd all be happy with. And I just don't understand why we can't do something good and have them agree to it.
If memory serves me, there was one meeting on this task force, and the school board member who organized it was going to have more, and nothing ever, ever has happened. And I believe the, the takeaway from the first one is, while we're looking at this, the busing issue for students, we also, at the same time, should look about what we're going to do with getting second shift people to and from their jobs because they do somewhat work together. And, and nothing has transpired with that member of the school board. So I think we're, I agree with Mr. Peck, where we, we keep, we're all spinning, but nothing is really happening. And I think the figures that came to us, again, I'm going from memory from this third party, were somewhat in conflict with the numbers and data provided by the school district. Let's move on. Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. You know, I will say, based on the comments of, of my colleagues, you know, I know it's coming from a great place. I know it's coming, coming from the heart. But I think we do want to be careful because just as the school district, that is their jurisdiction. We kind of have our jurisdiction. And I don't know how I would feel about their board having an opinion on how quickly we're paving streets or putting in laterals or things of that nature. So I think we just want to be careful about how we approach this. And again, if they're requesting additional time, we need to allow the latitude for them to do that.
All right, thank you, everyone, for your comments. Follow-up to the February twenty-fifth legislative, legislative meeting, which was yesterday.
I'm only going to add one thing and certainly, you know, ask other council members to chime in. Because the state budget hasn't been released yet, I think most of the legislators were, be appropriately being non-committal because there's nothing to comment on yet. They did suggest that a follow-up meeting may be appropriate after the budget's out there and as the Joint Finance Committee is scheduling meetings, or maybe some value to getting the legislators together. So what I would like to do is just keep an eye on the schedule for joint finance. And perhaps as we get close to the, the regional public hearing that joint finance typically has, and they come through northeast Wisconsin, see if we can get our legislators together. Typically, that takes place on a Monday. But it's probably going to be some within probably in the next, oh, I'd say, five to six, seven weeks. So it'll probably be late March, early April. Typically, the best time to get them is a Monday. They typically are home or on their way to the Capitol, like they were this past Monday. So once we know what that schedule is, we can, we can look at that. And we can just discuss and strategize, or maybe some value to meeting with them, and then maybe even send in a small contingent of council members who are available to maybe go to the Joint Finance Committee and comment at that time. So I'll keep an eye on that. Other than that, that was the only real takeaway I had, unless other council members had any observations or thoughts based on the meeting.
All right. This is the second opportunity for citizens to make, to address the council. Pam?
Yes, we have two individuals. They signed up to speak to item number fifty-two, but it'd be appropriate for them to speak here. here. Jen Steinhillber, three four zero Northwest Haven Drive.
My name is Jen Steinhillber and I live at three forty Northwest Haven Drive between Witsel and Highway twenty-one. I am here tonight to encourage you to vote yes to restore parking on the east side of Northwest Haven Drive between Noel Court and the southeast corner of Spring Mill, which is covered in this item of this night's agenda. The northeast corner of Spring Mill to Highway twenty-one would remain no parking. My neighbor and I started a petition last August, which most of our neighbors signed to restore parking along with the bike lanes on both sides of the street. We and our neighbors attended the traffic advisory board and they tried to reach a compromise having parking restored between Noel Court and Spring Mill on the east side of Northwest Haven. We then attended the sustainability advisory board, which also tried to compromise by adding eight-foot parking to the five-foot bark, bike lanes with the eleven-foot for traffic, which Mr. Collins advised would slow down traffic on our street. The option, which is listed in item fifty-two of your agenda, shows an eight-foot parking, five-foot bike lane, and eleven-foot traffic on the east side of the street between Noel and Spring Mill. The west side of the street would have the five-foot bike lane and the eleven-foot for traffic. This would satisfy the bikers and also our neighbors. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Pam?
The next one is Judith Seiler, three... Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr., Mr. Roloff, I got a question for you. And last paragraph of the staff memo, first line, no formal action by council is required at this time. Am I missing something?
That is correct. There's no formal action. And if you'd like, I can move that up in my reports.
Go ahead.
Just so that, out of courtesy to the folks who stuck around so long, it, so we can give them an update. And I'm at the approp, as long as there are no other after-council member statements is my updates, and I'll be happy to move that up and give up.
Well, there's a question, as there's a question directed to you related to the citizens' comments, so you could address this at this time.
There's no action required by the council. The way the code is currently written, we don't need to change anything in terms of ordinances. Mr. Collins, based on the input from all the boards, will, when, when the snow stops and we get it ready, we can stripe, re-stripe West Haven to accommodate both parking on the east side as well as bike lanes on both sides. So it's kind of a, a combination that we can achieve all those objectives and we don't require an ordinance change by the council. But initially, we thought we were going to need an ordinance change. And so we wanted to bring it back to council just so that you recognize why you don't have to. The ordinance allows us to, to permit parking already. So we're just planning to do that come springtime. And that can come soon enough. So I guess I don't have to report on number fifty-two.
No, that's taken care of. Thank you for all your efforts in the petition and so forth. We move on to council member announcements and statements, and I've added one thing, and that is boots versus badges. On March sixth, I think we have a graphic, don't we, Jake? There we go. On March sixth, twenty nineteen, the Wisconsin herd are putting on a boots versus badges, badges basketball game. Members of the Oshkosh Fire Department will be running circles around our pails at the Winnebago County Sheriff's Office. Discounted tickets will get you into the boots versus badges game and the Wisconsin herd game later that evening. It'll be a great game with many fun, fun-filled opportunities around it like touring emergency vehicles and photo opportunities. A portion of the ticket sales will go to either support the Oshkosh Fire Department, dive team, or the Winnebago County K-9 Fund. Both are vital programs for our area that are made possible in large part through donations and funding. And my grandson, my four-year-old grandson, Oliver and I have been asked to be celebrity coaches. And I've had one meeting with my grandson and he said it's teamwork. And a very smart young four-year-old, he said it's the team that gets the most points that will win. And I don't think the herd has quite tumbled onto that concept yet. So it should be a fun event on March sixth, so I hope everyone can attend.
Just so you know, Mayor, the last time the sheriff's office had a basketball team in rec league, they took first place.
But they didn't have me and my grandson as coaches.
Probably not, because it was about twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, but I think the police are like oh-for-whatever at guns and hoses.
Yeah. Well, that's because the fire department brings in all their friends from Fond du Lac.
So do the police.
There's some riggers going.
Police just, or fire just recruited a seven-footer. I'm just saying. No. It's a great event.
The coaching staff is really, you know.
Yeah. They who's, we can blame it on the coach.
That's right. All right. Moving on to city manager announcements and statements.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. In your agenda packet is the update on Oshkosh Corporation. Certainly answer any questions if you have, if you have them. The city attorney put in your mail, mailbox, those white binders, those are plan commission manual that periodically Ms. Lawrenson likes to address the plan commission, just to remind them of their, their varying responsibilities regarding, sometimes they act in an administrative body, sometimes quasi-judicial, explaining the legal requirements and the responsibilities that they have so they don't act inappropriately. I can tell you from my work on league insurance that, you know, after workers' comp issues, one of our biggest issues are zoning. Fortunately, we haven't, we haven't had those lawsuits. But throughout the state, those types of issues happen and it's usually not following the advice that Ms. Lawrenson has placed in those manuals. So we thought it'd be appropriate to give the council a copy of that as well because many, if not most, of those items ultimately come before the council anyway.
Well, I'd love to take all of the credit. I had a lot of help from Allen's people. The planners had significant input into that as well. The, probably the most important part for looking at the manual is toward the back there are, we call them, I think, guidance or decision-making sheets. They take each type of item that would come before the plan commission and to the council, and it, it explains the plan commission's role and the criteria that would be applied. So while a lot of those things come before you as well, the same standards would apply. So hopefully, it's something that the plan commission and, and the council will find helpful. I don't know if Allen has anything to add.
I think it's part of the program that the city wants to encourage as much education as we can for all our boards and commissions, and it's an ongoing process. And I know the city attorney is working with a lot of other departments on other boards and commissions' education, which we appreciate.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Lawrenson, just a question. In the beginning of the manual, there's a discussion about the public meetings and that. So is it your understanding that if a workshop would be held after or prior to one of the boards and commissions' meetings, such as plan commission, that that would, should be publicly noticed and/or an agenda provided?
Yeah, if we are doing workshops, we publicly notice them, yeah.
They're on the agenda.
Thank you.
So there you are. Happy reading. Fourth quarter preliminary revenue and expense statements. I spoke with Finance Director Larch, and you may recall that during the budget process, we estimated we would probably have about a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar surplus for the year. I'm happy to report we'll prob, we'll have at least that much based on what we're doing right now with preliminary final revenues and preliminary final expenses. So we're happy to report that. So we'll, as we get closer to getting the auditors in here and making sure we've got everything properly credited into the new year and the old year, we'll be able to get to more details. But we're confident that we'll be able to exceed that nine-hundred-thousand-dollar surplus. So that's great news. And thanks to Ms. Larson and all her staff for the work that they're doing on the audit right now. Sawdust Days, as you may be aware, Ellen Schmidt, the organizer for Sawdust Days, has made some public statements that Sawdust Days is ceasing operations. I sent Ms. Schmidt a letter thanking her for other forty-seven years of contributions for Sawdust Days, but understand the, the practical realities. I've sent Ms., the letter also indicates that they have yet to pay any portion of their twenty-eighteen fees, which are approximately thirty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. We haven't received any of those. There was a meeting on November twenty-sixth with our staff and they were asking about getting some reductions. And we said if you can provide us some, some evidence that would, would warrant that, we'd certainly welcome those. We didn't hear anything from them since that point. We were made aware that they were looking at going to the village of Winnicottie. Village of Winnicottie took no action. No motion made it to the floor of council. Staff recommendation was not to approve it. There were some residents of Winnicottie that expressed concerns from their experience with Sawdust Days. So that, I think that kind of did it for them. But my understanding is they had no intention of paying the bill, but we still have an obligation to, to let them know that, that they still owe us for that. We'll find out where that goes. With respect to the event itself, you know, they're, they're a different opinion. You've, you've heard them all and I don't need to belabor those. Certainly, as device is an issue, issue as it was, the, the opportunity to make Menominee Park, which is our flagship park in our system, available to the general public on the busiest weekend of the summer, busiest day of the summer, certainly gives us an opportunity. Mr. Maurer has been approached by several people in the community who have an interest in, in doing something. Pretty vague, but certainly expressing an interest of wanting to do something, probably much more modest than Sawdust Days. But taking advantage of the fact that we will continue to have the fireworks show, we have a agreement with Festival Foods where they're going to continue to fund the festival show. I can tell you, I, I signed the contract in the past week to, to get the fireworks show going. Mr. Maurer's actually looking for ways to get some additional donors, maybe to bump that up a little bit even. So the fireworks show will continue. The parade that has been done by the Vietnam Veterans Association will also continue as part of our July fourth tradition. So those two events are, one's a little earlier, one's a little later. And if there can be some other activities sandwiched in between those, have something that's more, keeps the park open and available to the general public. So, you know, I don't know if there's any questions or, or thoughts, but I wanted to report on that. And certainly, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that the Fourth of July holiday is a, is a bright one for, for our residents.
Councilmember Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Roloff. When would the billing have gone out for the last year's services?
We have sent out monthly invoices since August.
August, September, October, November, December, January, February. So we're looking at seven months past due?
Yes. And a couple of years ago, they were late in it, but they obviously didn't cease operations at that point. Ironically, with the discussion about special events, one of the conditions for denial of a special event permit is failure to pay outstanding bills. So they weren't going to be eligible for consideration if they still hadn't paid the bill. A few years ago, when they hadn't paid the bill, I believe they did a fundraiser towards the last minute. It was probably around, around this time that they finally paid it. I haven't had any response from Ms. Schmidt to my letter, and I'm not sure if I will.
And should this bill become uncollectible? Does it be picked up by the taxpayers, correct?
Typically, that's the case with any uncollectible bill.
But there, you did note that there were discussions, that there were questions about amending the billing. City said we'd be willing to talk to you, give us the data.
Yeah, there were questions about the...
Radio, radio silence.
The use of the...
Since that discussion, correct?
Yeah, I'd say that's correct. Ms. Lawrenson ended the meeting.
So we, we wanted to be, we were amenable to, to discussions, not being the big bad city, correct?
We believe that we, we made every effort.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a question. Do we, on those billings, do we typically ask for any kind of deposit, especially if there's like kind of a significant dollar round? Or do we collect any of that ahead of time?
You have the ability under the ordinance to do that. It hasn't typically been done in the past, but the ordinance specifically says that the council can do that.
Thank you.
And typically, Sawdust Days had paid their bill. That one year I mentioned, that was an exception. For the most part, they paid their bill within thirty to sixty days.
And have we been charging interest on that past due amount like we would a property owner if they don't pay their taxes on time?
I'm just giving you the principal, principal amount at this time, but yes, we, our billing system does have that.
Trina's nodding.
Ms. Larson's confirming, yeah, we do have interest on that. I've just, to make it simple, I've just been using the, the base amount.
Thank you.
Just one final thing. One of the, the issues, Hazel Street's going to be done this year, so there may be some silver lining in this. That would have been very difficult for a, a large event such as Sawdust Days, the scale. The timing may be appropriate to have a more modest event and literally let the dust settle because Hazel Street's going to be an inconvenience for people using the park. My advice is Irving is your way in this, this summer. So that's all I have on Sawdust Days. Implementation of monthly utility billing, Ms. Larson and her staff have been working religiously. I see them in this office on a regular basis. The idea was to implement it on April one. We're still going to do that, but it's going to be a bit modified. For people who are getting their monthly bill in March, the March bill will be a three-month bill, and starting April, those folks will get a one-month bill. But the folks who are in April, they'll get a three-month bill in April, and then the following month, then they'll go to one month. And then people in, who normally get their bill in May, will get a two-month bill in April and then a one-month bill in May. So the idea is to, to graduate it. It's all about software, and Ms. Larson was explaining it to me, and she would bore you as much as she bored me with the explanation of how software works. But we believe that this will be a, a good way to transition into it and get the monthly billing going. So by May, everybody will be getting a monthly bill, so it's semi-implemented in April.
Councilmember, Member Herman has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. If citizens already signed up for auto withdrawal, do they have to re-sign up?
No need to sign up.
I know there, something you sent us or we got, said, you know, that you need to sign up for the, getting an electronic bill.
Yes, the electronic.
If you already sign up for auto...
Come on, Trina.
Auto payment, you don't, the citizens don't have to re-sign up for auto payment.
I hope not, because I haven't re-signed up, so.
Well, I just, I don't do the bills at home, so that was, you know, who's asking that, so.
Thank you for the promo moment.
Sure.
So if you are signed up for the ACH payment, you do not need to re-enroll. That information will transition over. The only item we're asking people to sign up for is the email billing. So the form is available online. And so if you are pursuing that option, we just need you to complete that form.
Okay, and then if they do, they won't receive a paper bill from that point forward? Or will they continue to get a paper bill?
Excellent question. So you can receive an email bill, or you can choose the option to receive both an email bill and a paper bill until you're comfortable.
Okay. Great. Well, it sounds like our tab, what's the...
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. So this question came up this week in relation to the monthly billing. Apparently, there's still a number of folks who aren't aware of the credit, the stormwater credit application that they can apply for, for use of rain barrels and/or rain gardens. If someone has questions about that, who should they contact? And can you...
If they have any questions regarding the stormwater credit program, contact the engineering division at two-three-six-five-zero-six-five.
Thank you.
Mr. Roloff.
Thank you. Continuing, there's a memo in your packet regarding a purchase of a truck for the street division through the state of Wisconsin. A little plug for Free Family Bingo Event on March seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day, from one to three over at the senior center. And doing a lot more family events over there to encourage people to take a look at the senior center and everything it offers, offers to the public. Friend...
look at the Senior Center and everything it offers to the public. Friendly reminder, State of the City is March 18, so only three weeks away, less than three weeks away. We addressed parking on the east side of West Haven, so happy to do that, and appreciate the patience of the residents out there. Now it's up to the weather. And then just as mentioning for me, I'm going to be on vacation the week of March 25, so I will miss that meeting. I'm also planning to miss the March 12 meeting. I have a family event that is unavoidable if I want to stay in good stead with my family. We will, if we have a need for a closed session, it's a time-sensitive thing, I have to leave by 6:00. So if we have a closed session, I might suggest that we have it at 5:00. I'll be available for that. I'll be around all day. It's just that that 6:00 to 8:00 window, I need to be where I need to be. So I appreciate your indulgence with that. But if we do have a need for a closed session, we'll suggest it earlier. And that gave me enough time for Jake, come on and queue up the video we have. Oshkosh Media's put together a number of videos on Go Transit. This is one of them that staff has just put together recently.
Go Transit is a reliable, cost-effective, and safe way to get around Oshkosh. Riding the bus is easy. It all starts with planning your trip. You can plan your Go Transit bus trip using one of our route maps, which is also available on the Go Transit website, Google Maps, or by calling our office. The bus only picks passengers up at designated stops. Make sure to arrive at your bus stop a few minutes early. When the bus gets to your stop, hop onboard. If you need to, ask the driver to kneel or lower the platform for you to step into the bus. A ramp is also available for passengers who use wheelchairs. Before finding your seat, pay your bus fare. You can either pay with cash in the farebox or simply show the driver your Go Transit bus pass. Take a seat, enjoy the ride, and keep an eye out for your stop. When your stop is next, hold the stop request cord to let the driver know you plan to get off the bus. Make sure to pull the cord before the bus reaches your stop, as it will only stop at stops where people are waiting or when someone requests a stop with the cord. Once the bus comes to a complete stop, you may exit out the front or rear doors. Do not cross in front of the bus if you need to cross the street. Wait for the bus to drive away, and then cross the street when it is safe. Go Transit provides over 1 million rides per year, and is proud to provide transportation services for citizens and visitors of Oshkosh. For routes and times, fares and passes, or detour and alert information, visit ridgotransit.com, or check out Go Transit's Facebook and Twitter pages. Thank you for riding Go Transit.
That was a great audio voice. I think you would agree, or Jake would at least agree. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. At this point, Deputy Mayor Palmary would like to make a motion to go into a closed session.
Yes, I move that we go into closed session. The common council may convene into closed session to discuss the purchase of properties and/or investment of public funds within the city's social redevelopment district. So into section 19.851E of the Wisconsin State statutes, where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Second?
Second.
Would you take the roll?
Boog Gower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
37.
And I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
So moved.
Second.
In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn. Who would you like to convene?